Commissioner Wei is actually not feeling good, so he won't be in attendance. He said he'll try to do it through Zoom if he's feeling a little bit better.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Okay, it is six o'clock. I call this regularly scheduled meeting of the San Bernardino County Planning Commission to order. If we could please read the temporary procedures.
Sorry about that. The San Bernardino County Planning Commission welcomes your comments. Each individual speaker will be limited to a presentation total of three minutes. When addressing the commission via Zoom, phone, or in the chambers, please state your name and county in which you reside for the record. If participating on Zoom, select the Participants tab and click the Raise Hand icon. If you're using a phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. When your turn arrives, you will hear that you have been unmuted. If participating in person in the chambers, please complete a speaker card and provide your completed speaker card to the clerk prior to consideration of the item. Speaker cards are available on the table at the entrance. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Pack, if you could please lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
G W Devon Pack, District Five, present.
Robert Scagliotti, District Three, present.
Robert Rodriguez, District One, present.
Robert Gibson, District Four, present.
And as previously stated, Commissioner Ray is absent today. Certificate of posting, could we get an acknowledgement of certificate of posting? Get a motion, motion to.
Make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion to confirm the acknowledgement of certificate of posting. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Department announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Good evening. The staff has four department announcements that we would like to briefly go over with you this evening. The first one is in regards to the Housing Element Workshop. Second one is a newest RMA position that was filled. Third is discussion with the Planning Commission in regards to potential, a potential special planning commission meeting for October 12th. And the fourth one, as indicated on the agenda, is an update from the Board of Supervisors meeting on the 13th regarding the new community study areas. So let me start with the PowerPoint presentation here. Okay, so as the San Bernardino County RMA in conjunction with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership and also with San Bernardino County Council of Governments, the city of Hollister and the city of San Juan Bautista is gonna be working on conducting a workshop in regards to the housing element. It's gonna be in regards to what the housing element is and very importantly, why is public participation so important on the housing element process? And so that's gonna take place on Thursday, September 29th, 2022, as indicated on the screen. It's from six o'clock to approximately seven o'clock at the Community Foundation, the new epicenter building downtown. And we will have opening remarks by our speaker, Supervisor Betsy Dirks. And we'll have a moderator from the MBEB, Alisa Kroger. And the speakers would be Elizabeth Malergoff, Housing and Sustainability Policy Management for MBEB. And we'll be discussing the housing elements. I will be actually discussing best practices for community engagement. Veronica Lizama, Planning Manager for the San Bernardino County Council of Governments, will be talking about, about regional housing needs allocation facts and local transportation updates as well. There will be coloring pages for kids, there will be snacks, and translation will be, will be available if needed, Spanish translation as well. So that's gonna be on Thursday, September 29th at, at the epicenter. It's actually gonna be hybrid. There would be also a possibility for people to zoom in as well. So that's the first announcement. Second announcement is that we are very pleased and happy to announce that the San Bernardino County RMA has recently gotten a new position for code enforcement. We have Ms. Robin Leland who accepted the position. She has extensive history on code enforcement, mainly South Monterey County. And she also has experience as a law enforcement officer as well. So we're very happy to have her on board. She will, she will begin a little bit later this month. And we're just, we're just thrilled. As you know, we currently have one code enforcement officer and he's, he's a contract employee. And we'll, we'll continue, we have that contract still, so we'll continue to have Mr. Fasulo on board for the remainder of the, of the contract. And we have been in discussions as well with the Board of Supervisors for a potential second code enforcement officer. And so that was at the last budget update. And so hopefully either midterm budget or by next, next term, we'll, we'll bring those discussions again. Staff feels that it's very much needed. So wanted to let you know about that very exciting news. We're all very happy. And we want to bring to your attention, at last month's Planning Commission meeting, I provided a presentation to, to the commission in regards to major, up, major projects within San Bernardino County. And the direction that your commission provided us was that for these major projects, it would be, it would be preferable to have a special meeting and have them on a Wednesday to be consistent to our Wednesday Planning Commission meetings. And so one of these major projects that is coming up is the Bedeville Use Permit and EIR certification request. And so we are hoping to see if the Planning Commission would be amenable to do a special planning commission on Wednesday, October 12th at 6:00 PM. We know that in the past, you've been very amenable. And the five months that I've been here, we've done various special planning commissions already. We just wanted to have you see if you would be available for that date and time.
Available.
Yeah.
Devin? That'll work?
Yes.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll provide more information as, as the dates gets closer, we'll send you formal notification and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, at the regular Board of Supervisors meeting of September 13th, the Board of Supervisors adopted Resolution Number 2022-103 to initiate a general plan amendment to modify or eliminate the new communities, the four new community study areas as presented in our 2035 San Bernardino County General Plan. And they further directed staff to come back to the board at the regular meeting of September 27th, which the agenda just came out maybe just a couple hours ago, but to bring an urgency ordinance before them for the, basically to address that no new housing developments would occur in any of these new community study areas until the process of the general plan amendment finishes. And so, and so that's coming before the Board of Supervisors at the regular meeting of September 27th. And so just a little bit of background, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, in regards to the new community housing. The, since the 2035 San Bernardino County General Plan was adopted in 2015, it has been apparent that a number of policies and resource constraints may make residential development unfeasible or undesirable within the new community study areas. And if it's okay, I just would like to just briefly touch upon the four. For example, in, starting with the Bolsa Study area, if you can see here on the map, it's kind of toward the north, within the Wright Road area, all along Highway 25 north to 101, and then to the west. It consists of approximately 11,657 acres. Some of the constraints, as you may well be aware, is that there's inadequate transportation, infrastructure until such time as Highway 25 can be constructed. In regards to the policies, one of the things that is noted, has been noted is that there needs to be a better jobs and housing balance. Currently, there's about 55%, 55% of the, of people who work in San, people who have employment that live in San Bernardino County actually commute out of the county. And so one of the, one of the policies on the, on the general plan and the economic development element of the general plan is to have preference for commercial and industrial development in these, in the, in the unincorporated area of the county to provide jobs, positive tax revenue impact fees, sales, and transit occupancy taxes. And another policy is that within the regional housing needs allocation arenas, there's a goal and policy that really indicates that housing should be geared more towards the city of Hollister as opposed to the unincorporated areas that are prime or important farmland in the county. Now, very briefly on the Bolsa Study area, and so the next one, the, the next one is the San Juan Study area, which is located, as you can see in the map, is also part of the packet, west of San, the city of San Juan, Bautista. And it's approximately 4,600 acres. And about half, half of it, a little bit more than half of the area has already been or is in the process of being set aside with open space, habitat, agricultural conservation easements, or land trust. And so essentially, the, the remaining area is, that's, that's left in this area is considered to be unsuitable for development as a new community. The next one, the new Fairview Community Study area, which is located east of Fairview Road, approximately from McCloskey all the way north to Highway 156, as you can see on the map there, it consists of approximately 6,800 acres. And during the time period of the 1990s and, and some in the 80s, about 3,500 acres or so have already been subdivided into agricultural lots between five and 12 acre lots. And the remainder of the, of the land consists of mostly prime or important ag land, which may be best preserved and protected instead of developed with new towns. So that's one of the concerns in regards to the Fairview Study area. And the Union Road New Community Study area, as you can see, it's, it's along the, the western side of the city of Hollister, west of Union Road. And that consists of approximately 5,700 acres. And in that area, we already have the San Juan Oaks project that is currently under construction. And there's also five CSAs, which consist of Hidden Valley, CSA 15, Union Heights 35, Ashford Highlands 38, House Ranch Estates, and Montebello. And again, with this one remainder of the lots consists of significant areas of prime ag and important ag land, which may, the opportunity of new towns is really not feasible as well for this area as well. And so in summary, the Board of Supervisors at the regular meeting of, of September 13th approved an initiation to begin with the general plan amendment. And so also directed staff to come back for a urgency ordinance to prohibit housing developments in the meantime. So that concludes our announcements for today. Do you have any questions on any of the announcements at this time?
Is there an ETA to bring this back as an action item before the Planning Commission?
Is there an ETA to bring this back as an action item before the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so the hope is, and we staff indicated this to the Board, that for a general plan amendment, right now, we're, one of the biggest factors would be the California Environmental Quality Act, how CEQA applies to the amendment, and so depending on that document, it can be approximately six months or shortly thereafter, but if, it depends how intense that can be, it may be that we would be able to bring it before. But the urgency ordinance, as indicated, will be before the Board at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment, is there any public comment that pertains to the Planning Commission but is not specifically on this agenda?
There's no public comment via Zoom or in the chambers.
Okay, public comment is closed. Consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections, or is there a motion on the table?
I'll make a motion, approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four zero. Thank you. Regular agenda, public hearing, PLN 200054, San Juan Green Cannabis Facility Conditional Use Permit.
Good evening, Michael Kelly, Senior Planner, and I'm here to present the San Juan Green Cannabis Facility at 2400 San Juan Hollister Road, near Hollister. Before I go on, can you see the screen behind me okay, or would you like me to turn it? Can you see the?
Oh, that one.
We're good.
You're good?
There we go.
Okay, all right, just wanted to check. So San Juan Green Facility at 2400 San Juan Hollister Road, here on the map, as you see, on San Juan Hollister Road, west of Hollister, just west of the Fourth Street Bridge leading out of Hollister, in this industrial district that's well established on a property that's just under an acre and a half. The project proposes cultivation of cannabis, manufacturing of cannabis products, and distribution related to that, in a total of what is intended to be built, 46,263 square feet of interior floor space. Some of that's already built in the existing building, and that would amount to 13,934 square feet. Two more buildings are proposed to be built that would house further functions. The first one would be for cultivation, the others would have the manufacturing, the distribution. Also proposed is grading on the site to redesign the drainage, and 10 people at first would be employed. With the construction of new buildings and expansion of the business, if it allows, it would be expanded to 26 employees, 16 additional employees. The uses of the buildings are, as shown here, in the amount of floor area shown here, cultivation is the largest of the use of the floor area. Some in the existing building, just under half of the proposed is in the, would be in the existing building, and the rest in further building. The, what would be cultivated is, as proposed in the application, 37,000 square feet of plant canopy on multiple shelves or racks within there that would fit into this 22,174 square feet of floor area. And then the next two are processing and manufacturing in the new buildings. After that, the next largest use is distribution, some in the existing building, but the rest in a new building. And then nursery and drying in an existing building, in the existing building, and then offices and kitchen also. Here is a view of the site, and when you go to the site, you would arrive at the frontage road, you would see the opaque fencing and landscaping out in front, and arrive at the gate, go in the gate, see security personnel at the kiosk up front, and then see the parking, and then the left is one of the new buildings, the right is the existing building. On the left, the new, one of the new buildings, Building 2, would have manufacturing and distribution, and then the existing building over here would have cultivation. And then if you go toward the rear of the property, you find another new building, Building 3, which would have more cultivation and would have processing. You also see the access lane surrounding the building that was designed according to review by the fire department to allow proper access back there. And then at the far rear of the property, you see the lane continues and the rest of the parking for the property. Here's another view of the site where this happens to show the drainage that is proposed. The drainage would be changed so that, right now, the site grades, the grade is toward the north, which is over to this side, but the grade would be changed just slightly, but enough to make the drainage go to the front with runoff from the impermeable surface in storm events going to storage chamber up in front that would accommodate most of the runoff. Here is a view of the site on the frontage road of San Juan Hollister Road with the gate here, and in the future, there would be more landscaping, but the opaque fencing is there. And then you go inside and you see the existing building to the right, and on the left on this side, this is where the manufacturing and distribution building would be, and here's the lane leading to the back. Here again is that lane leading to the back in the existing building, and then when you go in back, here is where you see the existing building and where the camera is, where I took the picture, is about where the new building in the rear would start. Cannabis businesses are regulated in the state and local government levels, like with these regulations, the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, which was enacted in 2017 and followed the ballot measure that allowed recreational use of cannabis in the state, and took the prior medical marijuana rules and brought it all up to date into the, into what was needed following the ballot initiative. And then also came the regulations that the Department of Cannabis Control implements with detailed rules for all the different types of business operators, and the local rules in our county code that follow the state law and implement them locally with establishing the zones that are allowing cannabis businesses, and set out what we expect to see in project applications and what we expect to see in ongoing operations. The general plan, we have to consider that when we review the project, and this is in the, what the land use element calls the industrial heavy district, which accommodates, as the name suggests, heavy industrial uses, such as the volatile manufacturing and other activities of this project. We have this policy that favors new use and new development connect to existing infrastructure, which this would do with existing water lines, sewer lines, road network. Also, it favors positive fiscal impact, and this project would be subject to the cannabis business activities tax, which taxes every square foot of canopy and all the gross annual receipts on distribution and manufacturing. This policy expects avoidance of land use conflicts, and this is proposing an industrial use in an industrial district, also near established roadways, so it's a minimum of conflict that would otherwise happen if it were in a different location. This policy expects, or calls for diversification of agriculture, and although this is not exactly agriculture in industry, it's growing of a crop, which adds to the product of this county in terms of growing of plant products. This policy expects screening of new land uses, and that screening is proposed with landscaping and opaque fencing on the project site. Also, economic development element, these policies call for job creation in support of high growth and emerging industry, which this pretty much describes this. Another policy related to agricultural diversification, like before, as I discussed. And then this policy calls for reuse of properties for the sake of economic development, this does that. Further policies on air quality, which are addressed by project design and also addressed by regional air quality permitting, project design including such things as filtering the odor and negative air pressure that keeps the odor inside the building. Noise policies, manufacturing will stay indoors, and transportation would also generate noise, but this is an industrial district where the noise is more permitted than in other places. Light pollution policy, exterior lighting will need to be shielded, and interior lighting, this is not a greenhouse type of a building, this is opaque walls, so all that light would stay inside, the light that would be used for growing the plants. And then goals, goal and policies on stormwater that is addressed by the drainage that I discussed earlier. And then zoning calls it heavy industrial zoning district, which like the general plan, land use district of industrial heavy accommodates this, and explicitly allows commercial cannabis uses provided this conditional use permit process take place in a review by the Planning Commission.
Hello? Testing.
We can hear you.
Well, I'll continue then. Well, I'll continue. This project is kind of an unusual situation involving the parking because, and we will ask that you consider a variance, that's written into the resolution that's in the packet. The project was designed according to a set of parking regulations, and most of the analysis by us staff took place under prior parking regulations that required 32 stalls and were based on the count of employees. But then, only just very recently, we adopted the new county comprehensive zoning update that included new parking rules, and among the parking rules was, this was subject to requirement by floor area, which results in 40 stalls. The issue with that here is that this, if it were to be required, could be prohibitive to the objectives of this project and require substantial redesign and change to the project that would not have been foreseen during the bulk of the analysis that took place for this project. So the state authorizes the county to grant a variance in a situation where one property is not able to enjoy what other properties in identical zoning classifications enjoy. So the variance language is in the resolution. This is an unusual situation, typically, projects will not be in this situation where the rules abruptly change late in the process, so I wouldn't see this as applying to, I would see this as applying to very few, if any, other projects. So that's in the resolution, the variance language. And then CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, the initial study document was finished and circulated in July, and received public comment into August, including, and I believe I talked about this the last time around, but I'll say again, the Department of Cannabis Control asked for more information on the project description and project effects, and so in the packet is a revised initial study that has additions to address those comments. Nearby property owner asked that this project be limited just to what's proposed in the project description, be subject to enforcement if needed, and be prohibited from direct distribution to consumers, and the project description doesn't include that last part, and it, just approval of this project would satisfy what this neighboring property owner or nearby property owner requests. And then State Department of Toxic Substances Control recommended that testing happen of fill that would be brought to the site to avoid introducing contaminants to this property, and that's a condition of approval in the resolution. So as I said, the initial study is in the packet with the clarifications to address these comments. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission review the staff report, hold a public hearing, hear any proponents and opponents of the proposed project, consider the resolution including the CEQA document, and adopt the resolution to adopt the CEQA document as revised and approve this permit subject to the findings and conditions of approval in the resolution. I can answer questions if you have any, or I can ask for help from the applicant and representative.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Just to confirm, there is no planned commercial retail or direct sales planned at this facility, correct?
That's right, that's not part of this, there is not retail in this.
I have a question. The new buildings that are going to be erected, are they going to be compatible to what's there? They're not going to be, they're going to match the buildings that are there already? They're not going to be like rinky-dink ISORS, are they? Are they going to be like solid steel buildings, or could it be constructed of wood and matched and make it all look aesthetic?
They are, the designs are not final for the new buildings, but they are, if they were to be, what they would be presented, they would need to be, let's see, the rules for the industrial district. We could discuss this further if you have concerns about the aesthetics.
Could the applicant or the representative respond to that question, please?
Please.
Is that mic on?
Would you be able to maybe go where Michael, Michael was at, if that's okay, please? I know at the last board meeting, we were having issues with that as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jim Keener. You know you're getting old when you break your hip, and I did it on a minibike, so that's not. Anyway, no, I, these buildings, I want them to be nice, you know, I don't want some rinky-dink. We're thinking metal buildings, just like what's there now, and even redo the outside of the existing building to make it match. So we do want really nice stuff.
Okay.
We went to a lot of trouble to do all this because we wanted it done right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns from the commissioners? Is there any public comment?
There's one hand raised on Zoom. I all, you're unmuted. I think we're frozen. What's the name? I all, you can unmute yourself if you have a comment, your hands raised.
I have, I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment in the chambers?
Pete Brazil.
Make sure not to anybody. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and Staff. My name is Peter Brazil. I'm attorney from JRG, representing the applicant, Jim Keener, and San Juan Green regarding the conditional use permit that is before you, PLN 20054. Michael Kelly has already given a pretty good presentation regarding the project itself. I will just emphasize also that, again, it's consistent with the general plan. It is located within the industrial district, the heavy industrial M2 zone, which the activity that is proposed is consistent with that zoning, which allows for the proposed use, and takes advantage of a pre-existing already 10,000 square foot plus structure and its infrastructure. The project would be operating only in these structures and would expand in the future if success and business permits. That's notwithstanding that, the applicant thanks staff for its extended time in preparing the staff report, the initial study, and the mitigated NAGDEC. We've reviewed the same, and we find the findings and summaries in there consistent with our understanding and agreeable to us. In furtherance of this, we urge the Planning Commission to adopt the resolution before you, which in turn adopts the initial study. you, which in turn adopts the initial study and the mitigated NEGDEC, and approves the conditional use permit for this project, subject to the findings and conditions of approval contained therein. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What is the will of the commission?
I move to adopt the resolution to permit the conditional use.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the resolution with all findings and conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a first and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, carries four zero. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Commission, Ariel Goodspeed. If you can go ahead and go to the screen, I just wanted to pull up, there we go. So, I'm bringing back the item from the August Planning Commission under direction to add in rural transitional zoning as a permitted use for both home occupation and rural home enterprise under zoning code Twenty-Five Twenty-Nine. And, and again, I just, you know, want to reiterate that it is considered to be an agricultural zone per code and is consistent with the general plan as far as uses to be within rural transitional, and it also is consistent with other sections of our general plan, including expanding and diversifying our local economy and supporting business and supporting jobs for diverse population, capitalize on the county's natural and human resources, and supporting existing establishing new local businesses, and encouraging mixed-use developments to include love, work, floor plans for residents who desire office, commercial, or studio space. And it sustains the long-term economic well-being of the county by promoting economics sustainability and diversification. Is there any questions?
Any comments or questions from the commissioners? Is there any? Okay, is there any public comment via Zoom?
There is no public comment via Zoom or in the chambers.
Public comment is closed. What is the will of the commission?
I make a motion, we approve.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a first and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay? Carries four zero. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Are there any announcements from the commissioners?
No.
None? None? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries four zero. Thank you, the meeting is adjourned.